Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I'll call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. If the clerk could note that all council members are present. And we always begin our meetings with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as we find ourselves during this global pandemic crisis, we're always pivoting and making decisions so that we can serve the public and do the public's work. So tonight, we're pivoting again because we have some technical difficulties, and therefore the monitors aren't working. And if you're on Zoom, you can watch us on Zoom, but we won't be able to see you on Zoom because we can't, we have those technical difficulties. So everything is going to be in hard copy, so I'm sorry you won't be able to see it. But we'll, if you do want to speak and you're at home and you want to call in, we can have you on the telephone. And so let me tell you that members of the public are here and they're in person. And you can do it by also watching us on burnsvillemn.gov/meeting or Comcast Channel 16 or 859. If you would like to participate during the meeting remotely, you may call us at (651) (372) 8299. And you can join us on Zoom, but we won't be able to see you, but use your telephone to call. So more information is available on our webpage and in the council agenda packet. The next item is announcements and proclamations. Our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, August 4th at 5:30 p.m., and Tuesday, August 18th at 5:30 p.m. So originally scheduled for Monday, but moved back to Tuesday since Night to Unite was postponed until October. So our Night to Unite is pushed to October. We have a work session scheduled for Tuesday, August 10th, and that's canceled, but a special work session is scheduled for Tuesday, August 25th at 5:30 p.m. Now, we don't have any proclamations this evening, but we do have a recognition of an outgoing commission. So one moment, and I'll go over here and do that. Members of the council and citizens of Burnsville, it is our privilege to recognize and appreciate Colton Bauer for serving very dedicated to our community in the Parks and Natural Resource Commission, July 2019 to July 2020. Thank you so much for taking the time and helping us on the Parks and Natural Resource Commission. You've done very well. So I'm going to say namaste because I should not touch you. And here you go. Now turn around so JJ can take a picture. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, and best wishes. If you're going off to college, where are you going?
U of M.
U of M.
Yep.
So online, in person?
I have no idea.
Not yet?
This is every week, so hopefully, hopefully in person.
Yeah. Best wishes and great success.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda, not an application form that will be coming before us. And I have Mr. Bruce Dawson and Don Smith, who wishes to address the council. The microphone is right there. Good evening and thank you for coming in.
Good evening. Thank you. You can hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Bruce and I, that's my wife, Smith, we live at 12917 Rose Bluff Boulevard. We are north of Williams and the third house on the right. We are bringing three concerns forward. The first one is the volume of cars accessing Rose Bluff Boulevard in and out. For example, pulling out from Rose Bluff east or west is dangerous due to speed, the hill west of Rose Bluff, and a number of cars. Number two, heading east on Williams, there's a left turn lane to access Rose Bluff. Often cars heading west jump out early and head directly into the eastbound lane where cars are waiting to turn left. The third, and final, is the speed at which cars travel on Rose Bluff Boulevard itself. Thirty miles an hour is too fast. There are young children in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And my husband has pictures, information about the amount of homes in the area to show the large amounts of traffic.
Yeah, thank you. I've been around your neighborhood because of the nice trail that we have.
Little Red Lighters?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a, it's a great trail. I love walking that trail. And the other thing is that you're in your neighborhood, so you do have hills.
Yes.
Yes. And so, yes, if you have pictures, the clerk will take it for you, and we'll take a look at them. And I think Ms. Desrude is here, and she will also, will take those because that's the department will take care of those. But thank you for bringing it in. And I know that we can look at those speeds now. Am I correct, Ms. Desrude? And yes, we can.
Yeah, we see, we were gone.
Mayor, council, we're aware of this issue, and we have a speed counter and a traffic volume counter out there currently.
Very good.
We're looking at finding out the average speeds and the number of cars that are going through that area.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. So our staff is on top of it.
So could I just ask a question then?
Yes, please, Mrs.
And that's at the bottom of the hill, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So will that show the speed all the way up to the top of the hill?
Ms. Desrude?
So the equipment we use is called a jammer. It's located in one location, so it can only pick up speeds at one spot, but we can move that to another spot and collect data in other areas. But we only have one unit to collect.
So they'll do all of that. Anything else, Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'd like to speak just for a minute here. And what precipitated this, besides the three issues we have here, what precipitated us having to get up off the couch and come here tonight was Saturday, my wife Dawn and I were coming, we're returning home from about nine days of vacation. Okay? We're on motorcycles, good way to social distance, you know, and we don't mind, we stay away from people, we, you know, we're our own clan, we stick together. We were returning home Saturday, it was, you know, it was, it was old drat hot.
Yeah.
So Burnsville's like a ghost town on Saturday afternoon. Well, we were coming home about 2:00, turned in off of Williams, on Rose Bluff, we're the third house on the right. She rides a motorcycle, I ride a motorcycle. We work very well together. I pulled in the driveway, she was right behind me, pulled up the driveway, and looked over my shoulder, I did see her, and I heard her. We've got communication inside of our helmets, you know, so we can talk to each other. And we're dressed head to head with hot stuff.
Yeah.
That helps in a crash.
Yeah, yeah.
So I hear her go, "Oh," and I look back, and she, her motorcycle's laying on its side in the middle of the street.
Oh, no.
This is Saturday. Okay? And I had no idea what happened because literally she was right where I am now with my, with my back to her. And I turn around, it didn't make any sense that she's laying on her back and there's a SUV driving between where she was and I am in our driveway.
So it was on your street, on Rose Bluff?
On Rose Bluff, yes.
Yes.
This is just Saturday, just like three days ago. And she, she, you know, a couple expletives come out of her mouth, and, and I said, I said, "Are you okay?" And she says, "Yep." And the car that, the car that caught, what happens, a car passed her on the right as she was turning right into our driveway. And, and I kid you not, we were this far apart from each other, so.
And this is your neighbor? One of your neighbors?
No, it's not a neighbor. It was somebody passing through.
Okay.
And they didn't stop. They didn't stop. There was no contact with her, but they didn't stop, they kept going. So I jumped on my motorcycle in the driveway, took off, and, and was able to stop them about, oh, a half a block away. Now we're about this far from Savage, because you know where we live.
Yeah, I do.
About 300 yards from us, which is Savage.
Yeah, I do.
I went down there, stopped, stopped the people, and this is all in the police report. And they said, "Oh, we were going to come back." "Well, why did you leave in the first place?"
Yeah.
And I was fumbling, trying to get my phone out and call 911, and nothing worked because everything was connected to my motorcycle. They took off. So now I followed them up into a cul-de-sac, right in Savage, literally a block, a block west of us, and was able to get them to stop. Anyway, they came back and all this stuff, but the bottom line is, you know.
It was dangerous.
There was traffic coming down here, and I have no idea why somebody would pass on the right when you're turning right into a driveway.
Yeah.
That was just, that was just, that was just a horrible decision, is what it was.
Yeah.
But that's what precipitated us showing up tonight.
Thank you so much. And thank you for contacting our staff and that they've got things rolling.
Yeah, and your officer did a fine job.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Really appreciate that.
Who do I give some of these?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency item zoning. Mr. Lindberg, are there any emergency items to come before the council?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Members of the council, any emergency items? Okay, thank you. We will now move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. However, an item on the consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on the consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Staff, is there, Mr. Lindberg, any item from staff to be pulled?
No, Madam Mayor.
Members of the council?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Keely.
I would like to pull item 4J.
4J. Okay. May I have a motion for the balance, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Keely makes the motion, second by Councilmember Gustafson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. 4J is an application for Lloyd and Darlene Wallen for a variance for driveway width to exceed 24 foot, feet, and front yard coverage to exceed 35%, located at 13934 West Preserve Boulevard, and to deny the variance and adopt the findings of fact for denial. Councilmember Keely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My concern on this item is, and there was some evidence presented to us tonight that supports my, my position. I realize that there is a process to follow for applicants to be able to get wider driveway, driveway entrances off the street when they have three-car garages and large items, RVs and whatnot, that they're trying to pull in and park. And this applicant, as you noted before the meeting, has been working with the city for a couple of years, but hasn't come in for a variance. My, and so I let, it's on the record, he's worked with the city, he didn't come in and ask for a variance. I wish he would have reached out to myself and maybe some others, too, because I have a problem with this part of our ordinance. I don't believe that we should make it so difficult for somebody with a three-car garage to just put in a wider driveway. And so my first request is for the council to consider approving this wider driveway, regardless of it being in already or not, is beside the point at this, to me at this point. And then also support a request for staff to put it on their list, which they have a lot of things going on for, in the future, for us to address this specific ordinance and have a discussion at council of whether we might want to change it to what it currently means.
And you're okay if this is next year with everything that's on their plate?
Yes, and anybody that's between now and then coming in that would require or request a wider entrance on their driveway, I would encourage them just to come to the council. That's, we're elected to support you. And when you want something, come, come ask us, and we're very reasonable, and we're very open-minded, and we'll be happy to help in any way we can. And sometimes applications are what trigger us to look closer at an, at an ordinance because we have a lot of them. It's difficult to memorize, and that's how we, most of the time, find out that we have something that may not make sense in today's world.
Yeah.
So, or makes sense to the current wishes of the majority of a particular council. So, yeah, I realize that we're halfway through the year, we've got a lot of COVID things backed up in the pipeline, so it's going to take a while to get to it, but I believe that we'll get to it, and maybe it's in the all-day work session discussion for, for next January, but that would be fine. So I would make a motion that we approve, not deny this particular application.
First of all, I think I'm going to go to our attorney because I think there are some things that we need to make sure that are in the findings, and because this is not a hardship, or what we used to call a hardship, it's now a practical difficulty. And so there should be some reason so that when we look to the future on any variances, that people might not say, "Well, I don't like what the ordinance is on that particular thing, so, you know, I'm going to just do what I want to do anyway." But we need to make sure that we have good rules in place, that we can live all in harmony. So I'm going to go to our attorney because there is a state statute on all of this. Mr. Jamnik, please.
Mayor and council, there'll be two things here.
Oh, our mics don't work over there either? Oh, okay. We have lots of technical difficulties tonight.
You need to keep in mind on this one, in your packet, you have findings for denial consistent with the staff recommendation and the planning commission recommendation. If you decide to reverse that decision or that recommended action, and you want to have a motion to approve the variance, it should be to approve the variance and direct staff to prepare findings of fact supporting the approval. Second, and with that, council members voting on that motion should express their reasons why they think the variance should be issued. Councilmember Keely already indicated that it's a proposed reasonable use, and the restriction is restricted for a person that has a three-car garage. And so comments along those lines are essential to defend any challenge to the issue. So I respectfully request that, as you discuss that motion, to express your reasons why you think the staff recommendation and the planning commission recommendation should not be followed.
And the administrative.
Just think from that decision on the variances, the direction of staff to look at changing the ordinance or having a planning, planning commission study, a possible change to the city code.
Yeah. And the administrative judge also ruled.
That is correct. Basically, the essence of the independent hearing examiner was that the city staff issuing the citation or the non-compliance order, the corrective order, and the city ordinance was valid, defensible, and sustained, which is why Dr. Wallen then went to file a variance application.
So, Mr. Jamnik, in the findings of fact, under C, 11C, there is a similar home with three-stall garages located across the street at 13935 West Preserve Boulevard, and it meets the 24-foot driveway width and the 35% front yard coverage standard. So.
That was one of the factors in evaluating whether a 24-foot.
Yeah.
Apron could, could work or curb cut. And in that, and the overhead picture is in your packet.
Okay, very good. So Councilmember Keely makes the motion to approve the request for the variance.
Mr. Jamnik, was my motion clear enough following your guideline?
Well, the first part, but I think the second part indicating that direct staff to prepare findings of fact for approval.
That I missed, right?
Has to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we will bring that back for the consent calendar at the next meeting.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask Councilmember Keely to give you reasons for the findings.
My reasons are the.
You have the second and.
Then I, yeah, so Councilmember Keely made the motion.
I will second.
And second by Councilmember Schultz. So now discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My rationale for asking staff to prepare findings of fact to support this deviation in the driveway width is based on many existing examples within our city where there are three-car garages and, in some cases, larger vehicles that people are parking there or inside their garage, and accessibility of, for instance, a 20 or 30, a 30 or 40-foot RV to pull into a driveway when there's a 25-foot or 24-foot entrance, and then an immediate curve and getting into a position makes it very, very difficult, quite frankly, I believe unnecessarily difficult, when a slightly wider driveway can allow that to happen much easier, which is the basis for many of the variances that we've seen over the years and why we have so many driveways that are full with the support of three-car garage. That's my reasoning behind my position.
Councilmember Schultz?
Likewise, I do support this. I support it because it's, I think it would be a normal expectation for a person if they have a three-car garage to have a wider driveway. I think we should look at this ordinance as a whole. Additionally, I think we should look at the ordinance that is connected to this about the pad that people can put next to their home to store things. If we're going to look at that ordinance, we should just look at the whole dang thing and, and check that out. So I definitely support that as well. And, yeah, I, I don't see a problem on this. If we have outdated ordinances, we should definitely take them up. I'm fully supportive of that.
Councilmember Gustafson?
I am listening to this discussion, and this is the discussion we would have had had they come in for the variance. I, I know this council well enough, I'm pretty sure I can figure out where we're going to go with a lot of these things. The only thing that concerns me, they put our, put us in a bad position in the sense that we had the ordinance, that we talked to them about doing a variance, and they didn't do the variance, and now we're coming back to the council, and we're going to, I'm pretty sure, approve this variance. But it's just a bad optic because it tells, to me, it tells the public that if you don't like the ordinance, just go ahead and do it, and we'll figure, you'll be forgiven later. And some, we all have those ordinances we don't like, but there's some of those ordinances we do like, and we don't want that to happen, and so what message are we sending to people? And that's, that's my concern of it. I would not order these people to tear up their driveway and put in a 20-foot, 4-foot driveway, but I don't like the fact they put us in this position because had they come in for a variance with this council, it would have, it would have passed. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Okay. And I have been working with Dr. Wallen and, for about two years, along with our staff. And way in the beginning, we said to him, "Go through the process and get a variance." But he didn't want to do it. So he went ahead and just do what he wanted to do. And so now we're here about two years later, which puts us in a difficult position if he had done it way back when he was counseled to, to do the variance, and we would have done that, looking at everything that's going on. The other is that there's an economic cost to having him remove, but I know that legally, economic consideration is not a valid position for findings. And that, to me, is, is difficult because I would say, you know, if you had done it in the beginning, we wouldn't have this. The other is that there are a similar home on the same street with a three-car garage and met the 24-foot driveway and the 35% front yard coverage standard. So it, we are put in a difficult position. But I understand that we want to take a look at the ordinance, and I'm thankful that we're saying, you know, push it out to next year. We've got a lot of things that we need to consider. So there is a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Workman?
I feel like I got caught a little flat-footed on this one because I know enough to get me in trouble on this one, but not enough to make an educated decision on this variance. I agree that I, I don't agree, I agree that I don't agree. I agree that the ordinance should be looked at and be modified. Are they here tonight?
Yes.
And so their informal ask for a variance is this?
Well, it went through the planning commission.
And it was?
And the planning commission agreed with staff and the administrative judge, so it was all in the background.
But it wasn't a formal variance request?
It isn't formal.
That's what this is?
That's what's before us.
Okay. Like I said, I got caught a little flat-footed, and now I'll expose that I didn't read this particular item. So the request is a variance from our ordinance, and Councilmember Keely is saying, "Let's grant the variance and then take a look at the ordinance in the future."
He's asking for a variance after it's already done. He's already poured.
Sure. But if we're going to pursue looking at the ordinance to change it, I don't anticipate us running into this issue again, but I understand Councilmember Gustafson's point that we don't want to set a precedent that you can just do it and then ask for forgiveness later. So I understand and acknowledge that, that that's probably not the professional way to go about doing this. So all of that, I'm okay to grant the variance and pursue an ordinance amendment as this is, but also not losing focus on the fact that that probably could have been done differently. I don't want to promote that, that this process as being a way that we should handle things moving forward.
Yeah. Because he was advised. Ms. Desrude and Ms. Faulkner? Was it about over a year ago that he was advised to come before the city council to do the variance? A year and a half ago, before, before the driveway was poured? Yeah. Mr. Jamnik?
Mayor and council, I'd like to make two comments on this. Is that, one, this is probably not the right way of doing this, obviously, unless the council also wants to take a hard look at the zoning standard, because you do have the situation where other people will then have a look at it.
Yeah.
So in the future, in order to avoid this, would be the situation is, you're granting the variance to, or proving it tonight on the basis that you don't like the standard and you think you're going to be changing it. If you were going to be in a situation where you like the standard and you were going to be maintaining the standard, you probably wouldn't be granting the variance.
Correct.
So that, that does make this situation a little bit different.
Yes.
And secondly, for members of the public, Dr. Wallen and his wife have had letters sent from the city on a code enforcement basis. They've had a citation issued requiring court appearances on more than one occasion. The legal proceedings have gone, including with an independent hearing officer, they required a full-blown hearing. This matter, because of pandemic and related issues and, and the seasonality of the thing, has basically been going since roughly August of last year in an enforcement posture. So for anybody to think cavalierly that going forward and then begging forgiveness after the fact is a good way, you're basically setting yourself up for a one-year worth of legal trouble.
Yeah.
And so there is a very big disincentive to do it the right way, or to not do it the wrong way, basically, to an incentive to do it the right way, follow the procedures, you won't go to court, you won't have to deal with citations, you won't have to deal with lawyers.
Yeah. I know. This is, this is my concern. Councilmember Schultz?
If we could, just because I think this is also good for people at home to understand, could we have someone from staff walk us through the steps in the process if a person was going to ask for a variance on their driveway? What would that process be, and how long would that take?
Ms. Faulkner?
What costs are associated with it?
Oh, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Madam Mayor, members of the council and members of the public, our variance application for residents, we've just lowered the fee at the last.
Yep, the last fee.
Five hundred dollars, is it? We lowered it, and the escrow is a thousand dollars. It used to be five thousand dollars. Applications on our website, as is the correct fee, I just don't have them all memorized. And then it takes about sixty days for us to go through that process.
And he was advised to go through that process about a year ago, before the driveway was poured?
Um, yes, he was informed that we had a process. The fee and the escrow was different in 2019 than it was for 2020. At the time, the fee, I believe, was seven hundred and fifty or seven hundred and seventy-five dollars with a five-thousand-dollar escrow. We changed that after a previous discussion with this council. It was part of the budget, I think it was, last year.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Schultz, you had a question?
Yes. So could you restate that again? What was the fee and the escrow, and what is the current fee and escrow?
I do not know what the current fee is. I don't have it memorized.
We did lower it.
Correct. The current escrow is a thousand dollars. The fee prior to it was either seven fifty or seven seventy-five with a five-thousand-dollar escrow. And I apologize, the fees and applications on the website and our fee schedules on there too, as well.
Okay. And so Dr. Wallen went through and went through this process, this application, paying all of those fees?
He paid the higher fee and the higher escrow amount because his application was ordered to be submitted by December of 2019 per the administrative law judge.
Okay. And he did all of that, and so therefore he paid the fee, et cetera.
Correct.
For the application for a variance.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Keely?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I, some of my question was clarified. Thank you, Ms. Faulkner. I think City Manager Jamnik kind of laid it out.
Our attorney.
City Attorney Jamnik, sorry, sorry. Laid it out quite nicely. You know, the applicant in this case has gone through quite a process and legal process. And had they made a different choice, might have been a little bit shorter. But ultimately, I think my point was, was going to be if this council was not intending on supporting a change to the ordinance, we would be denying. And there would be different actions required as a result of it, however, because we aren't. And we are wanting to change and don't agree with the current ordinance, I think it's appropriate. And in my fourteen years sitting on this council, this is not the first time that we've done this. This is maybe the ten, twelfth, fifteenth, twentieth, thirtieth time. It just happens. It happens sometimes that things finally come to us and we're able to make an assessment, and we find out that we don't necessarily have agreement with the current ordinance on the books and that we desire to change it. And when we make that determination, it impacts any future applications related to this because now staff knows that they're going to be, we're going to be working on a potential change to that ordinance. Probably, they probably hate it because it sort of leaves it in limbo to some degree. But anyway, thank you.
Ms. Faulkner?
Madam Mayor, I was able to look up the fee. It's three hundred and seventy-five dollars with a thousand escrow. So we basically cut it in half.
Because that's what we did.
Thank you.
So one of the things with all the variances that we've done in the past, Councilmember Keely, it was prior to doing the work.
No, this certain circumstance has been up before us before. This exact scenario has come up before, while I've sat here.
That, that they, someone have done what they were told not to do and then came in for a variance? I don't remember that we've done that in the past.
Happens on lakefront properties now and then.
I remember that.
So.
I'll have to be reminded. Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Nay. So I want to tell Dr. Wallen and his wife that I really appreciate all the work that we've done with you. But for me, it was difficult that it was, we worked for a year and a half, and you knew what you needed to do, and you did it anyway. And for me, it is about setting a precedent. And then, and yet you had someone just across the street from you having a three-car garage and all of that. And I wish that it was done the right way from the beginning because my sense is that you would have gotten it. But to be told what you needed to do and went ahead and did it anyway, that, to me, was difficult. So I know we're going to take a look at the ordinance, but I just can't go down this road because it is about setting a precedent. And because all of the work that I know staff had done, all of the work that has gone in with the Planning Commission and also with the administrative judge, and that was a lot of money that was invested in all of that. So, and that's the reason for my negative vote tonight. So thank you very much and good luck. You have your variance, Dr. Wallen and Mrs. Wallen. Okay. And now we move on to the regular agenda. And the regular agenda is a public hearing, and this is a resolution vacating drainage and utility easement at 1945 136th Street West as dedicated on the plat of Valley Ridge Senior Housing and Valley Ridge Heights. And presenting this evening is our city engineer, Jen Desrude, Ms. Desrude. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the PowerPoint is at your, at your desk there for the Burnsville Luxury Apartments. Earlier tonight, on the consent agenda, you approved the development application. It's common, or required that we have a public hearing for variance, or, sorry, for vacations. So the next, the second part of that are the easements that will be proposed to be vacated. That goes right through the middle of the site. In the larger easement is an existing storm sewer. And then in the one that goes, well, this is north, that goes east-west, there's existing overhead power and cable. So those will be relocated into new easements. If you go to the next page, the colored document that shows the easements that will be proposed with the plat that you already approved earlier tonight. The ones that are in blue are the ones that are going to be rededicated on the plat. The ones that are in purple kind of overlap what was, that will be dedicated on the plat and are vacated. We're clearing all the easements and then putting the correct new ones on the plat. And because there are utilities in a number of these easements, there's a few more conditions than you'd normally see. So the new, the conditions that are recommended are that the new plat dedicates all the necessary easements. The plat that you approved earlier tonight does that. The plat is recorded before the, or at the same time as the vacation. The developer will provide the trench for the utility relocation. They're actually moving our utility or relocating our utility, which is a storm sewer, and that all the costs are paid for by the developer.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Ms. Desrude? This is all about cleaning up all of those things before we put a project in place. So this is a public hearing, and I will now open a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve?
Councilmember Gustafson makes the motion to adopt the resolution and to approve the vacation.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Workman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. The next item is a resolution authorizing Burnsville Cares Act for Business Grant Program. Presenting this item tonight is our community development director, Ms. Jenny Faulkner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's odd not to have my PowerPoint. So I'm going to read from my paper, PowerPoint for those watching, and hopefully it will get up on the screen at some, at some point at a future time. So let's see here, you've talked, this is your third meeting, I think, talking about a cares program. And at the last meeting, we really honed in on dollar amounts and criteria. So taking all that feedback and put together a program for your consideration this evening. The direction that you've given us is that from council, we took an EDC direction, is be very open. We didn't want to categorize and make a specific set of business criteria. The program before you takes about eight weeks to get money in the hands of businesses, which I think is very short, and I hope you do too. We have our partner in Ellers that will be reviewing the applicants, applications as they come in. And we have AE2S that's helping us with the creative, including developing an online application portal with our IT team and helping us with the marketing, getting the word out of this. City staff, we are dealing with the coordination and have put together the program that you have before you. And we will do the administrative side. The application is nearly ready to go. I got that finished today, working on a FAQ, working on our program guidelines based on what we have here today. So we'll be ready to go as quickly as we can, take it to the next step, should this get approved. And a key thing also of our program is with the timeline I've laid before you, we should be able to get our funds out the door before the county can. And that just makes it easier for administration so that we don't have to check somebody else's list. And at the same time, we can do cross-marketing on anything we can put out to our businesses. We can encourage them to also apply for the county funds as well. They, I believe they have ten million dollars in their pot. So we're going to try to do some shared marketing that way. So there's two parts to the program. Part A is for private businesses, one million dollars allocated to that fund, grants up to twenty thousand dollars each. It was proposed to be a lottery system, and you have to be an eligible business. And the criteria are laid out in detail in the resolution. Part B are for, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, grants up to fifty thousand dollars each. These are direct allocations to our nonprofits. You identified at the last meeting, Experience Burnsville, the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce, and 360 Communities as nonprofits that you'd like to help. You also talked about the hospital. They can, because they are listed as a qualified entity in the federal cares funding hospitals are, they do not need to fall under this program. That can come as a separate, direct allocation from you at a later date. So the basic criteria, all applicants have to demonstrate that they've been adversely affected from the executive orders related to COVID-19 public health emergency. They have to demonstrate a financial hardship because of the COVID-19 public health emergency. And they have to be in good standing with the State Department of Revenue and Secretary of State as of March 1st. Eligible expenses, they can only include, funds can only be used for eligible expenses as designated by the federal government. So these are, this is where we're getting this from, interpreting the guidelines that we've received from them. It can be for things like payroll, rent and mortgage, utilities, insurance, payments to suppliers, other critical business expenses, including consulting to modify business operations that we've talked about. It can include expenses that have not, are not reimbursed from the federal idle or the PPP program. So if there are remaining funds that a business has, that they haven't been reimbursed from those other federal programs, they would qualify under this program. Types of eligible businesses, private, for-profit businesses located in Burnsville, they have to have a physical presence here. Majority owned by a resident of Minnesota is our preference. Can include home-based businesses, can also be a local franchisee. What's ineligible? Income from passive investments, businesses that have a focus on speculative activities that are based on price, not on the normal course of trade. Businesses that are prohibited by law. Businesses that have previously received state or county cares funding. Now, when we get our cares funding out, the county portion will be irrelevant, but if we go back out again, that may be relevant in the future. But national or corporate chains, a business that's been in default prior to the executive orders and are February 29th, 2020. And then ineligible business would be a business that's permanently closed or shuttered, where this funding would not bring them to an operational state within 21 days. So our timeline is eight weeks or less. Like I said, we started the creation of the application and the marketing materials, so we've got that well underway. Within ten days, we hope to have a secure online portal with the application being online, have our marketing materials done, and engage our partners on marketing. And those conversations have already started. On the timeline, we are looking to open up applications no later than August 1st. If we get our portal open by next Wednesday, we'll start taking applications and get our marketing going next Wednesday. A lot of this depends on technical stuff that I have no control over. So, but we know, this is, we're pretty sure we can get this done within a week. So we will have applications open for a minimum of two weeks, no more than three weeks. Ellers is going to review them as they come in. And so we will know that those that are in the lottery are completely eligible. And then the submittal deadline, if it's two to three weeks, will be about August 19th to the 21st. Again, we want to make sure folks have at least two weeks to apply, maybe no more than three weeks, so that we can kind of get funds out as quickly as possible. After that deadline, submittal deadline has been reached, Ellers is going to need a couple of weeks to review any final applications they come in. Of course, there's going to be a lot at the end. So they're going to need a couple of weeks, they think, to probably go through what comes in. That gets us to September 4th. And if they're done sooner, then we're done sooner and we'll move our timeline up. Then there'll be a lottery and notification and distribution of funds the following week, with the final distribution awarded, awards no later than the week of September 14th. So because these applications are being vetted as they come in, we know when the lottery happens that they're eligible and we can cut checks. We don't have to do any more paperwork. So that's going to require a little bit more submittal upfront from the businesses. If they've already applied for other funding, hopefully they have those at the ready. Financial statements, tax forms, things that they would have already have done from March, April, May, June. It's just going to be, I think, the gathering of the documents and getting them uploaded to us. And then we have to wrap up and finalize all of our documentation after that and make sure we're prepared for an audit when that time comes. So we'll, we want to have this thing buttoned up. We think that'll take about thirty days after that. And all funds certainly will be expended by November 15th deadline. If there are additional funds, you did receive a request from the chamber to fund some other businesses that have received state or county cares dollars. Their programs are up to ten thousand dollars. Your proposed program is up to twenty thousand. If they've received that, could they apply here? If you want to entertain that, I would suggest we do that with a second round of funding. If we don't spend all this money, then we can open it up to others. That's just going to make things flow quicker, less questions we have to ask, and whatnot on that. So should you approve this, adopt this resolution tonight and approve the program in our next ten days? Like I said, we're going to work on the online application, get our FAQ wrapped up, and get applications accepted here by the end of the month. So that's what I present to you this evening, and I'll stand for questions.
Councilmember Keely?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You addressed the issue of the difference of our cap. It's been kind of a struggle to figure out how, when we're both putting out a program pretty much at the same time. And you said something about it might be a moot point when we do ours for the 20, if the county comes, is the county going to essentially announce and promote and open up their applications at about the same time we are? Or do we know that?
Councilmember Keely, members of the council, July 27th is the date that I've been told they plan to open up their applications and start marketing. So is that next Monday?
Yeah. So they're going to be maybe a couple of days ahead of us. Okay, so.
Correct.
That, initially, I thought we'd have to coordinate somehow. So if an applicant were to apply with the county and the county was able to respond quickly and awarded them, that if, you know, as these programs are generally following the, you're disqualified from then, another one. But our limit is higher. I like your idea of coming back after this initial round and taking those that may have qualified for more up to our 20 and looking at them after we do the initial round. And in our own, I guess, in our own world, right? Because we're going to, we're going to work with them, but we're not. We're going to do our own lottery and poll names. The other issue I wanted to bring up is, you know, I've been running through this, the math of our 4.7 and some change, and the amount that we think we'll need by the end of the year. And it's been estimated that we're at about a half a million now, and it might go up to nine hundred thousand. And so we need to, so in my head, I'm kind of saying, all right, we need to sort of reserve a million dollars to make sure that our city needs are taken care of. And there's, there's going to be some funds remaining regardless to, that could go toward our public safety payroll as they have allowed that now to be a qualified expense. And when you do the math and if, because we're doing up to 20, I think that's a point of clarification that people need to understand because it's real easy to read that ten thousand dollar grants. And they don't really see up to, or they don't understand, well, if you only qualify for four, you'll get four. You won't get 10. So it's, all of the programs are up to 10.
Except for us.
Ours is up to 20, but they're up to. So we'll have some that'll apply, and maybe it'll be less than 10, a little over 10, up to 20. We're going to have a mixed. We're going to have a mixed, but if, if they averaged, just for estimation purposes, with 1 million, then it's 100 applications that, and maybe a little bit more if, you know, some of them are, you know, some are going to be higher, some are going to be lower, maybe it's a little bit more than that. And with 3,200 businesses listed in Burnsville, and from history, I remember the number of active businesses being referred to more in the, maybe the 200 to 2,500 range out of the 3,200, that we have a lot of businesses that are registered, but they're, they're not just active. They're registered with the Secretary of State, but they may not be actually conducting business. Is that 3,200 number that was in our background or from another piece of material, is that the total registered with the Secretary of State that reside or are based in Burnsville?
Ms. Faulkner.
Councilmember Keeley, members of the council, I believe so. It came from a database that we got from DED, and I think they had another source data. So I believe that's where that's.
That makes sense. And I know that in, in the past, I've heard the number 2,000 to 2,500, 2,300 range. That must be more representing sort of the more active businesses. And that may be where our potential is, is out of that little over 2,000 is our pool. And with a million dollars, this, you know, the county is going to probably give us somewhere in the million and a half to 2 million range, based on our size of city population and the aggregate to the total county, maybe it's a million and a half, whatever it is. So there's another 150. So we might get to 250 businesses out of, or about 10% of how many could be out there that could be applying. So on that basis, I'm going to suggest that we change our allocation and go up to $2 million of our 4.7 for this program. I say that because that still only adds another 100 businesses, potentially maybe 120 or so. That's still going to scratch the surface. And what's driving my, my desire to up this amount is this, we have a lot of things to take care of. We have our own hard costs, which we've set a million dollars aside for. But the remaining going to public safety helps the city, but it doesn't help any, it helps the city probably over the next year or two. But it doesn't help any of the businesses that are hurting today, that are going to actually contribute to the problem that will arise in 2020, 2022, when, if we have more vacancies, the commercial property land owners are going to go and challenge their valuation with the county, which is going to drop our revenue. And so we're really in the business today of saving as many businesses as we can by providing these grants. It's the whole reason we're even doing it. And so if we allocate 2 million, but we only use a million and a half, well, then the other half million is going to flow into what we're going to have left over for, that will redirect to something else, unless there's some rules with this program that would prevent us to do that. But I would like the council to consider upping it to 2 million, because I think, when you just think in broad terms, 4.7 less 2 is 2.7. You less a million for, that we set aside for the, the city, it still leaves a million and a half to 1,007. I, I, I really don't think that that's a problem to me. I, I don't think we're trying to protect 2021 and 22 so much. I think we're trying to protect our businesses today that have suffered significantly because of this problem. So I throw that out for council discussion.
I'm going to go to Ms. Faulkner, and then I'm going to go to Mr. Lindberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just regarding the county program and timeline, our intent would be to do co-marketing, anything we send out. Right now, I'm looking into a postcard mailing to all of our commercial utility billing accounts, right? And, and market the county's program. The county's not allocating any specific dollar amount to communities. It's a lottery. So the more Burnsville applicants we can get in the county pool, the high, higher likelihood that more money will come to Burnsville. So we need to market the county program, I believe, as much as we market our own, to increase the pool that's submitting to the county. The second thing is regarding timing. I believe with our aggressive timeline, we will know and have our checks issued probably before the county does. They're vetting them after they come in. So their consultant needs four to six weeks to review the applications after they do the lottery. So they have a very simple application, then they're going to pick you, and then they're going to tell you, you've been picked, and then they're going to tell you, and we need X, Y, and Z. So that process is going to start, I think, mid to late August, August 26th, I think it was on the calendar, and go through, I believe, the end of October. So I, I'm, I'm optimistic that our funds will be out the door, so we will know which Burnsville businesses are getting funded through the city program before any funds are issued at the county. And they may wait to issue any for any Burnsville businesses until our checks, you know. We'll work with them on that. So just a couple of things about the county program.
Thank you. Follow-up, Madam Mayor. You made a statement that is now a different direction than what we got at our last meeting. It was stated at our meeting that the county was going to allocate their 10 million around the county by the various commissioners' areas that, and so I just, my number was 10 million divided by seven commissioners. It's maybe influenced by population. Burnsville has a dense population with a lot of businesses, so maybe we'll get more than a million and a half, maybe it's closer to 2 million. So they have decided not to allocate based on, and, and cover each commissioner's area somewhat equally or proportional to business or population. They're just going to treat it as the entire county as a whole?
That's the information I received from the CDA staff in their last update. That's by assertion of watching the county board meetings. There's, there's no specific amount. If there were, I'm sure we would know what it is, and we would be marketing it, but nothing's been brought to our attention in that regard.
I mean, it's not, not that I disagree with it, it's just a different, it's a different information than what I heard the last time. So my thought process is probably not going to change. I would still advocate that we go 2 million, but, and hopefully, you know, the Burnsville businesses will apply in both. And, but, and maybe this works out better, if they put an application in Burnsville and the county, and we process and do the lottery, and they are awarded through ours, better, because now they have a shot at that 20 cap versus the limitation that the county's offering.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Lindberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. A couple of things. Councilmember Keeley, to your, to your point, certainly there is, there is some time for us to consider our allocations. As a matter of fact, we plan, staff plans to bring back next, next meeting, August 4th, a complete expenditure plan that lays out how we might approach not only the grant funding, but also answer some of those unanswered questions to this point on staff expenditures. I will give you just a brief update now, that, that expenditure plan will show some additional capacity for us to, to capture staffing costs, both in public safety and throughout the organization. There has been some additional clarity on that recently. So when it, when it comes to taking care of those needs, we might want to consider that before, before taking additional action. Right now, just by comparison's sake, we're about 25% of our allocation at the 1.25 million. Our counterparts, our market cities are at about 10% when it comes to business grant programs. So you are, rest assured, taking the lead as an organization or as a community to support our businesses. I would suggest that it might be helpful for us to be able to bring that expenditure plan back to you. We, we don't anticipate that we're in a, in a hurry. We certainly can make additional changes down the road. And there's also a question about additional funding that might come, that might come our way. And I believe that that expenditure plan will help the council make it a good decision down the road when it comes to, when it comes to what programs are funded, and also taking care of the internal costs, including some of those staff costs when it comes to the allocation of those funds.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilmember Gustafson.
I, I have no problem looking at more funding for our businesses, once we see what our needs are, what we, you know, when we talk about our needs at the city, we're talking about the taxpayers' needs. These are the property owners, they get affected by all this, and what they pay in property taxes and that. So we need to somehow kind of mitigate a lot of that as we move forward into our 2021 season, because we're, you've heard it up here from here, we're not sure where we're heading towards yet, and it's kind of a bouncing ball right now. So we need to take care of some immediate needs for our taxpayers that live here, and our business owners that are here, because they, they also benefit from a, a tax situation. And then if there's money left over, we can go back and revisit and, and help some more businesses. I'm all for helping more businesses. It's, I see a lot of them, a lot of them struggling. The ones that are open right now are struggling right now. And so it's, they need, they, they need the help, but so do, so do the people that live here.
Councilmember Keeley.
Well, all good points. I mean, I want to make sure that they're still here to continue to be able to pay their taxes, and if they don't make it over the next six months, that'll be a moot point. The city, I mean, I don't want to make this a tug-of-war between helping businesses survive, which provides jobs, which provides an economy and prosperity, versus trying to mitigate future, you know, levy burden. To me, the clear and present danger is the businesses that are at risk of failing, and the reports are daily of businesses failing. This is one program that we don't have any idea how many will actually save, but we know that it's the right thing to do, and it will save businesses. And saving the jobs is my primary goal, with whatever money that we have from this CARES Act. Because the spirit of all of the congressional, congressional work has been keeping people employed and keeping businesses open, so they can continue to pay those people. And to me, that's the priority that's preeminent over trying to salvage something for future mitigation of, of levies.
Councilmember Workman.
Thank you. I tend to agree with Councilmember Keeley on this, but I do have a few questions about the process. Jenny mentioned that, you know, we could do a second round of, if funds are remaining. So I mean, all of this is fairly pliable, and, you know, we're not, anything we sink in tonight can be moved and readjusted and.
Yep.
And moved on the fly. Because at our last meeting, I had mentioned that it would be nice to have a pivot of an additional half a million if we do run out quickly. And I would still stand by that, that if this ends up being a very popular program, that I would like to be able to pivot and do that. But our timeline on this, we'd like this to be done by the 19th to the 21st of August. Expenditure plan is coming back on the 4th. And obviously, we'll be discussing this again on the 4th. So if we, I mean, if we settle on a million tonight, or 1.5, or 2, and we see our numbers on the 4th, I mean, we can readjust and move the shells around at that point, too, correct?
Yes. We have a resolution before us for a million.
Plus the additional nonprofit.
Yeah, for the nonprofits. So, so what we, we can do, I would like to see what our expenditures are, and then we can see what we can, you know, supplement more. I am all in favor for us helping, as long as we have the money to do that. And I think we can do both. We can take care of our community and the tax, the residents of the community, and also help our, our businesses. So I think those are there, but I think we need to, we don't have all of the information with regard, so I'd like to see the information with regard to our expenditures.
Then I'm fine with this, but I would go on the record that after our expenditures review, I, if it makes sense, and it feels like it will, that we do make a push to expand this. But again, to Councilmember Keeley's point, we're kind of going into this with the blindfold on. And if it's a dud, then it's all moot, moot anyways. But I agree, I'd like to continue to beef this up if, if possible, and if needed.
Ms. Faulkner.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, once we start accepting applications and getting them vetted, we will start the tally of what the need is. So we will know very quickly how quickly we run out of money, and, but if everyone waits till the end to submit, then it will be shortly thereafter, you know, from the deadline. But we can make an adjustment then, we can make an adjustment after, we can reopen it up. We, we have lots of options with this program, but I think the key is to get something going, so we can find out exactly what that need is, to help get you the information to further guide your decisions.
And you'll give us the temperament of the momentum and how this is feeling, obviously, as.
Absolutely. Yes.
Councilmember Keeley.
I want to compliment Staff. You pulled this together very quickly. This is a great program.
Thank you.
This, I know that you had to stop a lot of other things and, and get resources on this to get this far and this put together, but I have to say, this is the fastest and most proficient, I think, government could possibly work, and it's because of you and your staff that, that pulled it together. This is very, very innovative, efficient, and very proactive, and I'm really proud of the work that you've done. I mean, I saw this in the, in the background, I was, I was just like, kind of like heart-warmed over, because we don't normally work like this, right? We don't work this fast. Neither does the federal government, and they're also doing things that are quite extraordinarily quick. But we're, we're doing it at the grassroots level here at the city level, and, and I just want to thank you so much, and I want to cap off my, the last of my comments with, we're doing more than other cities, because they're on the bus to Abilene. Somebody said 10%, and they're just jumping on that bandwagon. We are boldly leading with what we're doing. And quite frankly, they need to take notice of what we're doing, because it really is what I said earlier. This is about saving businesses and jobs. And we've been given, thank goodness, through congressional act, we've been given the opportunity to do that right here in our community, and the county is as well. And so I, I hope that we're overflowing with applications, with qualified eligible applications, and that we have to come back and allocate more money, because that means more jobs are going to be saved here in Burnsville. And that's, I, I call notice to all the cities who are watching or paying attention in the news, go back and rethink that 10%. That is not enough, and you could do a lot more for your businesses. Thank you.
What we do is what's common sense and practical as we see it going on today. And so Councilmember Gustafson.
Hey, I also wanted to thank staff for the work you put in this. I know it's, it was a lot that you got done. And I, I think it's important as we put out the message to everyone that we're open to this changing as things go on, if we have to add or whatever. It's, you don't have to put it on all in right now, but like you say, as the applications are coming in, we're going to know real quick how much money we're going to need to, to make this thing work for people.
We can't take anything away, though, once, once you approve this.
No, 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 no. I get that.
We can add more, but let's not take any away.
You're, we know it's going to be a million, at least a million one. But, but I think the message should be that it could be more if needed. That's really where it's at.
Yes. And let me tell you, I think the last work session that we had, where we looked at all of this together with staff, good, clear direction allows our staff to move effectively and efficiently. So to you, Ms. Faulkner, and to our city manager, Melanie Mascali, and to our deputy city manager, because the three of you worked very quickly to make sure that we can get this program moving, and I really appreciate all the work that you all do. So, but tonight, let's move on the resolution that's before us, with the understanding, once we, once we get through understanding the expenditures of the city, we can evaluate what the balance is on our CARES Act funding. And.
If I may.
What we all have talked about is that how we make sure that we take care of our businesses. Councilmember Schultz.
So that people at home know, the reason why our council has been able to do things and have done things differently than other councils in the area have done, which sometimes means we're kind of out swinging in the breeze for a few weeks, is because of our staff, because of what they're able to do, the support they're able to give us, and because we understand that, and we have a level of trust with our staff, we're able to go farther out on a limb than perhaps other councils are able to do. And so I have a great deal of appreciation for our staff, even when I advocate running roughshod over them, for everything that they do, because they do give us the confidence to go way further out there. So I am happy about that. I am also happy that we have been able to recover this much of our stolen goods from the federal government, that we can reallocate to our businesses in Burnsville. And so I am extremely happy to hoist the black flag, take that money, and get that out to our businesses. So let's do it.
And with that, I move to approve the resolution. I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. All right, very good. And the last item is the COVID-19 response update, and our deputy city manager, Mr. Lindberg, is. is going to be giving us that very short update.
It will be, I, I promise. Madam Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of quick points of information on the last item. The first is, we will continue to get details out about the program to our businesses and community. I believe that there is a small business listening session on July 30th. We'll make sure that that's well advertised and communicated in all of our platforms. The other thing, despite our technical difficulties tonight, our multimedia staff will upload the visual presentations to the playbacks of, of this meeting, so folks will have access to the presentations that Ms. Faulkner and others have made tonight. That should be up by noon tomorrow, or noon on Wednesday, just so you're aware.
Thank you, Mr. Lindberg.
Absolutely. Just a couple of updates for you, real informally, tonight on COVID-19, our response and recovery efforts. The first, we've already talked about in some detail, and that is, on August 4th, we will bring back to you an expenditure plan that very clearly outlines where we believe we are in terms of exposure and liability, as well as opportunity to reimburse those expenses. Staff's been working diligently, our, our finance folks and others, on, on pulling that together, and we'll bring that before you on August 4th. The, the good news, or some news nevertheless, is that there's been some more clarity on staffing, employment costs, particularly related to public safety, which we've discussed, as well as other resources that have been allocated both to our, our, our response work and our recovery work. Speaking of recovery work, the second item I wanted to bring to your attention tonight is our recovery team continues to work on our roadmap. As you're all well aware, we're in step two of a three-step process. Step two has been all about getting back to business as we look at the next normal. Our plan right now is to update that roadmap. Our staff has been working on making those changes, and again, on August 4th, I'll bring back an update to you where that process is. Our final step is all about, step three, is all about our reform efforts, really, what are the innovative things that we've learned, and what do we do differently moving forward? And right now, that group is discussing those ideas, and hope to have a little bit more information for you on those items coming up on August 4th.
Very good.
With that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Lindberg?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for the update. Members of the council, there are no other items to come before us this evening, and a motion to adjourn is in order.
Move to adjourn.
Councilmember Keeley makes the motion. Second by Councilmember Workman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Good night, and thank you for being with us.